Okay, it's seven o'clock. Call Reagan being the Buchanan City Council to order. Ask if you'd join me for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. With respect.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God and the people, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the sparsest crowd we've ever had.
This is a little on the sparse side. No recognizable guests. Brings us to Department Board of Reports and Item.
Yes. First item, well, I'll tell you what. I'm gonna give a little bit of my report and then go into Resolution 2014-16. You do have in front of you this copy, our end of the year financial report for 2013-14. Do wanna keep a note that this is unaudited at this point. So I just wanna make that clear. But I do wanna point out to your attention, our total year ending revenues for 2013-14 were $3,756.50. Our total year end expenditures were $3,601,48.77, which is actually in excess of $100,307.73 revenues over expenditures. You can see that on the very last page of your report. I do wanna note this. The city of Buchanan ended the 2013-14 fiscal year with a fund balance of $795,783, which is approximately $245,783 more than what was previously projected for the 2014-2015 budget, which is the budget we're on now. The $795,783 ending fund balance is actually the largest fund balance the city has had in over eight years, with the exception of the 2010-2014 fiscal year, when we actually had a last-minute revised BNO return, which substantially increased the fund balance for that year. Also wanna note that in addition, the city maintains a current municipal stabilization fund, or rainy day fund, in the amount of $500,790.91. The increase in the fund balance that we had projected for this current budget year, again, mentioning that $245,783, is actually gonna be up for your consideration in Resolution 2014-16 here in just one moment. With this comprehensive report, I just wanna let you know, and our new council members know as well, that if you want a little bit more of a detailed report about this, please see me after council, or swing by the office, or give me a call. I'll be happy to give you a line item breakdown, if you want that as well. I'll skip that portion of my report and go right into the Resolution 2014-16. As we talked about at the last council meeting, according to West Virginia Code, at the end of the fiscal year and beginning of the new fiscal year, we have to do a general fund budget revision based off of our year-ending fund balance, which I just mentioned. When we did the budget, approved the budget back in March and April of this year, for this current year, we had projected a $550,000 end-of-the-year fund balance. Again, we ended higher than that by $245,783. As we stated earlier, the funds, there are some commitments that previous council has committed to and projects that are ongoing, or projects that may have an outstanding grant, which we're waiting to hear from. Those items are actually reflected in your expenditure report. It will be on this page of your packet. Under City Council, I do wanna mention, under City Council, I put the remaining portion of the excess fund balance of $146,783 into City Council, which will actually increase the council capital outlay line item to $176,783. You can follow it on this page. Sorry, I probably need to document this a little bit better. Two reflections, again, of some commitments that we have under Cities and Streets in your line. Transportation Enhancement Grant, that is an 80-20 grant. We have to expend the money, then we get reimbursed up to 80%. Talking to Jay Holland, we need about $120,000. Again, 80% of that will be refunded back to us through the grant. So that's reflected in the Transportation Enhancement Grant line item. And that, again, to refresh your memory, is for Gateway East or East Main Street Project. And then the second item is the Land and Water Conservation Grant. If you all recall, it's the grant we had applied for from North Buchanan Park to add additional playground equipment, and more importantly, to add some handicapped accessible playground equipment. And with that grant, that's a 50-50 grant. That reflects the total expenditure, and again, up in your line items under federal grant and state grants. One is a federal grant, which is the land and water conservation. One is a state grant. Those revenues are reflected in that as well. And again, the remainder of that fund balance has been put into council capital outlay to use at council's discretion throughout the fiscal year on any various project, or any certain appropriation that council may feel as necessary during the next 11 months of the fiscal year. We'll have to, of course, make a budget revision if we decide to reallocate money out of council capital outlay. I know it's a lot of garbly goo, but basically, this is what council wanted to do at the last council meeting. By law, this has to be done and submitted to the West Virginia State Auditors by the middle to end of this month, so we're right at that deadline. So at this time, unless there's any questions, I'll ask council if they will consider approving Resolution 2014-16.
Motion made to approve Resolution 2014-16. Motion made and seconded. Any question, further question or discussion?
I have a question. When can we discuss items that we think should be taken from that money and paid for? Today, tomorrow?
You're talking about the...
The expenditures of what the balance was put in.
Well, money that's been put into the capital.
Put into the capital.
Capital, I think, at any point.
Well, these have a suggestion, and it may go or may not go, but I would like to see our police department be equipped with body cams, or the cruisers with the dash cams. I can think of several times where it will save a dispute between a civilian and a police officer, when you can definitely show who's in the right and who's in the wrong. And I think that's very important in today's society, with everybody else having cameras and everything else, that they're taking pictures of everything the officers do. I think it's a great safety factor if our officers were equipped to actually record what is going on. And that's just my suggestion for part of the night.
Okay, we need to...
Yeah.
Ready for the question on the motion? Ask the recorder to call the relevant.
Ron Pugh?
Yes.
Mary Alba?
Yes.
Tom O'Neill?
Yes.
Pam Capari?
Yes.
Dave Thomas?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Mayor?
Yes.
I'll continue my report. I just wanna make one note. We ended the year one of the highest we have in the last eight years, and you have to consider these two things, but I think it's pretty awesome. This also includes the $100,000 that we were able to take out and assist the sewer department with the emergency repairs that they had to make during the winter time, and also includes a pretty good chunk of expenditures, a little over $100,000, to complete the public safety building. So I don't anticipate those projects happening this year, but if that's the case, we would have been close to $1 million, and that's pretty awesome.
Mr. Doss, I think that comes from good management from all the department heads, and also from you, sir, for the way you handle your job here.
I think it reflects highly on Michael.
Under Old Business, Home Rule Application. Some of you are probably pretty excited to find out the status of that is. I will let you know. The city of Buchanan has been advised by the Municipal Home Rule Board that a regional meeting will be held in Bridgeport, at Bridgeport City Hall, Monday, August the 25th, at 8:00 in the morning. They will be hearing presentations from our city. News that I received, there were 23 applications for 16 slots. In our region, will be us, of course, the city of Fairmont, city of Clarksburg, city Morgantown, and city of Schenston. There's actually gonna be five regional meetings. Some have already started, July 7th, and the last one will end on September 8th. So I've gotta assume we're not gonna hear anything until after September the 8th. I don't think they're gonna make decisions, but they're five regional meetings. Say what you want to about having those meetings throughout the state. But anyway, Monday, August the 25th, at 8:00 at Bridgeport, at Bridgeport City Hall. I encourage council members, anyone supporting the Home Rule, to be there, kinda coach us up a little bit, and I understand we're first to present.
It's August the what?
It's August the 25th at 8:00.
Until we make that presentation, I take it?
Yes.
Yes.
So we're not gonna hear anything until after September the 8th. Under New Business briefly, and I'll get out of your hair. The Conference Center at Brushy Fork is rounding completion. I've been notified by the CVB and Laura Meadows today that there has been a conference center tour scheduled for Monday, this coming Monday, July 21st, at 1:15. So Monday, July 21st, at 1:15. Anyone interested in going, public council, to meet at the site of the National Guard Armory on Brushy Fork, we all know where that is. So that's Monday at 1:15, if you all wanna take a tour. Other than that, unless there's any questions, that concludes my report.
Questions for Michael. Thank you, Michael. Lieutenant Loudon, Police Department.
Just wanted to report that our moving into our new offices is making considerable progress. Most of our stuff is moved in there. By now, we have a few odd end things here that we have to contend with. Jessica Jenkins, our office administrator, I call the deputy chief, has been great at organizing the move, and we got a lot of the biggest stuff moved in today. So, actually, yesterday and today. So, other than that, that's pretty much all I have to report on for the city.
Questions for Doug?
Are you gonna have an open house?
We are. I think what we would like to do is get everything put in its proper place, and then... Because I know my office is a mess right now.
Don't want people tripping over stuff, right?
Exactly.
The safety guard.
We have a lot, a lot more room, you know. I mean, I'm sure some of you have been downstairs and have seen our office downstairs, and have seen how crowded we've been. Here, we have, you know, a lot more storage space, so it won't be as cluttered as it was prior.
But it's time that we have a complete public safety building.
Yeah.
I'm proud of being in there.
I got a question for you. The comments or observations that Ron Pugh made, can you give us your perspective on that?
Yeah. We have talked about body worn cameras and in-car cameras, and we see the advantages of them. We also see the comments and complaints we've probably received from, you know, wanting or requesting those. Especially the body worn cameras, when we go into a person's house, you know, the comments are gonna be made, that we're abating their rights. I agree with Ron. It's a good tool to show that whenever we get a citizen complaint that the officer was being rude or abusive, we can play the camera back and show that that's not what took place. I'm a TASER instructor, and I know our TASERS don't have cameras on them, but I know in situations where we're gonna have to use them, the body worn cameras would help us show that the person, how the person was acting prior to being tased. In-car cameras work really well with DUIs, because they activate, you can actually pull back on the tape and show, you know, events that happened, you know, two or three minutes prior to the initial traffic stop. So there are advantages, many advantages, to the in-car cameras and the body worn cameras. So, you know, I appreciate, you know, the request. Any device we can use for our department to better our department and improve our performance out on the street and dealing with the public, you know, I appreciate, you know, because it makes our job so much easier.
I have been reading up a lot on these two items, and I find that they're wonderful tools by themselves, but they're a great tool if they're used in conjunction with each other.
Right.
I have a question, I may. So with these body cams and car cams, it will actually enhance the safety of our officers?
Yes. Yes. You know, the in-car cameras are good, you know, when you initiate a traffic stop, the blue lights come on, the cameras activate. But, for instance, if you, you know, an officer, an officer can get killed in a traffic stop really easy, really quick. It only takes three seconds for a police officer to get killed in a traffic stop. So, and a lot of times, those instances occur outside the vision of the video in-car camera. So the body worn camera would help with that if the officer's getting into a foot chase or getting into a struggle outside the view of the in-car camera. Body worn camera would help, you know, if something happened, if the person got away, would help us, you know, later on down the line, apprehend the person, be used as evidence.
I think if we ask the chief to come back to, you know, look at Michael, and let's get an estimate as far as what you're looking at.
We have been, in fact, we had talked to TASER. TASER makes a body worn camera, and they're supposed to send us one that they send around to different departments. The only thing is, there's so many, you know, law enforcement agencies that wanna check it out, or, you know, somewhere down on the list. So we have been looking at body worn cameras and in-car cameras. We had in-car cameras, you know, prior to, when we had the Impalas. The only bad thing with those was it was VHS, and eventually those faded out. There were some flaws with the cameras, but now, you know, the companies that came out with those have actually made several improvements. And, in fact, a lot of them now fit on the rearview mirror, and you can pull the information off on a jump drive now. Okay, that's how compact they are. So, I mean, there's a lot of advantages and advancements in in-car cameras. But I, you know, I always, I always throw this out there, nothing beats having extra people. You know? So I'm always an advocate, you know, and you'll always hear me say, yeah, I'd like to have more officers. So, in fact, you know, the chief and other city council members have heard me harp on this multiple times. It's getting to the point now where it's hard for even Matt and I to do real police work, because we're having to do so many administrative things now, and we would like to have more, more people on the streets, so to speak. So, but I always hear that out there.
Any other questions for Doug? Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Brings us to Tom's turn.
You had a double-headed quarter, didn't you?
A lot of work is routine, Tom's side and mine, as far as, we had about six new services. Completed the line for day in car, and that's where five of the services went, where he's putting in a trailer park. And then we got invited to a health department training, flushing and sampling techniques to try to help us improve on our water quality and the distribution. The plan itself had went through that a couple of years ago, two years ago, and now distribution's gonna be going through that. We're gonna take some classes on that, that they're offering, try to take advantage of them. We have been doing some work on the tanks, which is not an every week or every year occurrence, but like with Victoria Hill, we painted it a few years ago, and we're getting some mold from the trees where the canopy's over the tank. So we pressure wash it, try to maintain the paint. Just don't have to look at repainting here in another few years, it helps preserve that. Also, with the cloud tank, it's a constant battle of keeping the graffiti painted over. For the most part, everything else is just more or less routine. That's all.
Question for the water department? Thank you. Thank you. McCollum?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, on our Angus lawsuit, the plaintiff, we're very intrigued to hear what she's going ahead to say about her injuries in that action that was filed a few months back. She will be deposed on August 19th at 10:00 a.m., so more to follow on that. That matter remains in discovery and probably will be in that mode, at least till the end of the year. You have in your packet, or actually, I gave it to you after the packet was assembled, the Qualified Voters Petition for Annexation of Auto Disposal Systems. That's the way they do business here. You've heard me mention them before as IAA. They are one of the same entity, they just didn't change the name of the corporation here in Buchanan. They have signed their petition, and I also have an email commitment from Michael Madden, their vice president. I messaged him after the last reading, expressing Mr. Holland's concerns on the fence placement, on what would be the eastern fringe of this additional five acres that they are going to be leasing from Delta West, and their top fella responded back that they will comply with whatever the city requires of them relative to fence installation. So that shouldn't be an issue. Couple of other real quick things. You've got also something I gave you tonight, a copy of the latest letter to Mr. Elenfeld, the United States Attorney. This was dated yesterday. Dear Mr. Elenfeld, thank you for your most recent letter of June 23. I have shared your letter with the members of the Buchanan City Council, and of course, Police Chief Matt Gregory and City Administrator Michael Doss. While there is naturally disappointment respecting the Harrison County Task Force decision denying any allocation to Buchanan from the Hot Stuff Cool Things property seizures, our officials do appreciate your offer for assistance concerning the BNO tax component of the matter. Our city officials are most enthusiastic about the prospects of drug task force being created in our area, perhaps involving our sister cities and counties situated in Lewis and Barber Counties. There have been some feelers extended to a couple of the neighboring agencies, and I believe there is interest in our area to discuss possible establishment of a multiple county drug and violent crimes task force here, similar to that of our neighbors to the immediate east in Randolph, Tucker, and Pocahontas Counties. Buchanan would be most pleased to host an organizational interest meeting. I will be happy to discuss the schematics of bringing the critical players together and assist you in that effort any way I can. Our city remains committed to waging its own local war on drugs, and welcomes any assistance and direction you may lend. Please contact me at your earliest convenience, so we may discuss how to proceed. Thank you for your continued attention to Buchanan's situation. The other letter that I gave you in your packet is the latest on the Sudden Lake matter. As I reported, we had just met a day or two before the last meeting with Peter Brown and Dave Bach, who's the Vice President of Operations for the Atlantic Region for Sudden Lake. This goes to Mr. Bach regarding city of Buchanan, franchise renewal, and other Sudden Lake issues. Dear Mr. Bach, thank you for your visit to Buchanan on June 24th to meet with me and Peter Brown to discuss various cable-related matters here. I appreciate your commitment to resolution of all of our city's issues, but particularly franchise renewal and addressing the trespass issue near our municipal cemetery and leading to the company's head-end site near our city's water tank overlooking the cemetery. During our meeting, you identified your company's point of contact for discussion and hopeful resolution of all issues as being Peter Brown. As you may know, Peter and I met at length again just this past Monday, July 14, and I believe made considerable progress in further identifying all issues, together with possible ways of working through all problems. Frankly, this is the most optimistic I have been in several years about our community's opportunity to revitalize the excellent partnership that previously existed here with Sudden Lake. I will continue to work with Peter Brown to hammer out a mutually acceptable franchise renewal agreement while also bringing conclusion to the trespass matter that has been pending since last October. Thank you for your commitment to resolving these matters. If you have any questions or comments, feel free to contact me. I would note that the two-hour meeting that I had the other day with Peter Brown, what we will be presenting to council and the TV Cable Board, I don't wanna give you a date yet, because he's actually looking into some questions that I posed to him that might be included in our franchise agreement that he didn't have the answers to. He needs to check with his, the folks that he works for, with Sudden Lake. But he has agreed to terms whereby the city would be paid $500 a month for the lease of the head-end site that we haven't gotten anything except a dollar for since going back to the late 1980s. We also discussed that if this is to be a seven-year franchise term, that property would be more, worth more lease-wise, seven years later than what it is right now, and he agreed to a 3% per annum escalator, which would take the monthly rental value to closer to $600 a month by the time we would get to the end of that next five to seven-year franchise agreement. I brought to his attention Mr. Pugh's concerns expressed about programming and the technical reception with some folks in the community, those kinds of things, and he said he would be glad to check into any technical issues, number one. Number two, programming has not been taken off the table. We discussed the addition of five to 10 new services that he will, again, be talking with Mr. Bach and the powers that be in St. Louis to see what they could do to bring new services to the expanded basic lineup to Buchanan. So more to follow on that. The Planning Commission is meeting on July 28th, and I have completed the first draft of the ordinance that the council would ultimately consider relative to establishing the college zone. The zone establishing the military zone is about half-baked, but actually, it's the easier of the two ordinances for me to draft. The Planning Commission will consider these ordinances from a recommendation perspective at that July 28 meeting, and then at the first meeting in August, you would be asked to consider on first readings the next two ordinances, which would establish the college and the military zones. There is some reason, especially with the military zone, to try to press ahead with that as quickly as possible. According to our friends at the CVB, they wanna open up right after the 1st of October with wedding receptions and all those other kinds of things, and that property, any property that is annexed into the city limits, automatically comes in under state code in the most restrictive possible fashion. That is to say, under our zoning ordinance, the most restrictive zone is R1, single-family residential, and that we don't want the armory and the new hall to be zoned, you know, single-family R1. So that's, it's really important that the Planning Commission hopefully react very well with making some recommendations to those ordinances, so that you can consider those on August 7th. Also in your packet tonight, Teresa Summers helped me with this, but we have put together a tentative ordinance, 383 of the city of Buchanan, which pertains to the mandatory attendance of board meetings by board members. What I am suggesting with this ordinance, I know that there's been concern expressed previously by members of the council, when we're dealing with personnel matters, that you just don't spring it on folks, that you have some discussion in the whole bit, and if you jump to the very end, under the effective date and where we typically show the readings, I'm suggesting a first reading of this ordinance on August 21, and a second reading on September 4. What this would do, if the council agrees that you like this draft, this could start to be routed to the four utility boards in this next cycle, so that they can have some awareness, if not input, respecting the ordinance. So I know you guys love me reading ordinances. I'll be quick. Ordinance number 383, and this is not a first reading, this is just to let you know what's in it. Ordinance number 383 of the city of Buchanan... Ordinance number 383 of the City of Buchanan, an ordinance requiring the attendance of all regularly scheduled utility board meetings by all members of, one, the sanitary board, two, the waste collection board, three, the water board, and four, the consolidated public works board, being the four utility boards of the City of Buchanan, in order for utility board members to receive the monthly compensation established in 2004 pursuant to ordinance number 311, accepting the mayor from application of the provisions of this ordinance, providing for effective date of ordinance, and specifically amending ordinance number 311 of the City of Buchanan. Whereas the council of the City of Buchanan previously established, one, the sanitary board of the City of Buchanan by adoption of an ordinance effectuated on October 17, 1957, two, the waste collection board of the City of Buchanan by adoption of ordinance number 117, effectuated on October 5, 1961, three, the water board of the City of Buchanan by ordinance number 126, effectuated on March 21, 1963, and four, the consolidated public works board by ordinance number 263, effectuated on June 5, 1993, and, whereas the statutory provisions of Chapter 8, Article 16, Section 4 of the West Virginia Code as amended expressly provide that compensation paid to any person serving upon any public works board shall be specifically provided for by municipal ordinance, which statute specifically applies to the operations and activities of both the waste collection board and the consolidated public works board of the city, and, whereas the statutory provisions of Chapter 16, Article 13, Section 18 of the West Virginia Code as amended expressly provide that members of a municipal sanitary board shall receive compensation for their services, and, whereas the statutory provisions of Chapter 8, Article 19, Section 19 of the West Virginia Code as amended expressly empower and authorize any municipality operating a water work system to establish a board to supervise and control the municipal water work system and to exercise the powers, authority, and duties granted to and imposed upon a board as provided in Chapter 8, Article 16, Section 1 of the West Virginia Code as amended, and hence, any compensation paid to any person serving upon such water board further shall be specifically provided for by municipal ordinance, and, whereas the council previously established monthly compensation for all appointed members of the four here and above described utility boards pursuant to the provisions of ordinance number 264 that was adopted on May 6, 1993, and as said compensation thereafter was amended pursuant to ordinance number 311 that was effectuated on May 15, 2014. That's not correct. That should be 2004. I just found a typo while I was reading. I apologize. Whereas the council pursuant to ordinance number 311 specifically established the compensation for all utility board members in the amount of $200 per month, but did not then mandate attendance of monthly utility board meetings in order for utility board members to be entitled to receive their monthly compensation, and, whereas the council reaffirms the effectiveness of the city's utility board structure respecting the management and operation of Buchanan's municipal utility operations, but also believes that the best practice going forward is to require regular monthly meeting attendance by all utility board members except for the mayor in order for utility board members to be paid their monthly compensation, and, whereas the council now desires to specifically require as a prerequisite to payment of monthly compensation to utility board members, that all members except for the mayor, who is chairperson of all utility boards, shall physically attend the regular monthly board meeting in order to receive their respective monthly compensation. Now therefore, be it ordained and enacted by the council, the City of Buchanan follows. There are some findings of council that frankly generally track those wherashes that I just read to you. There is some specific language that accepts the mayor out from application of this ordinance. I think the miscellaneous provisions in Article 2 are worthy of note. A, the city administrator shall closely monitor meeting attendance of all utility board members and shall issue compensation to each utility board member accordingly during the ensuing months' pay period. B, the city administrator further shall, on an annual basis and at the end of each fiscal year, file a report with the city council recapping the attendance of all utility board members of all regular utility board meetings held during the previous year. C, the cancellation of any utility board meeting by the mayor shall not be deemed to constitute a meeting absence by any affected utility board member, and utility board members as a consequence of such mayor-declared cancellations shall nevertheless receive their monthly compensation. D, all other provisions of ordinance number 311 and any and all other ordinances of the City of Buchanan not amended hereby addressing the city's utility boards shall be deemed to remain in full force and legal effect, except for those provisions which are expressly amended pursuant to the provisions hereof. Of course, the standard severability article that you see in all ordinances and then the effective date ordinance that I alluded to at the outset of my discussion about this. So I want to go back to that mayor-declared council meeting. If we have a blizzard in December, January, February, and, you know, the governor has said people shouldn't be on the roads, something God forbid awful happens like what happened back in 2006 with the Sega tragedy, you never know. So if things like that happen and the mayor basically says, look, we're not going to have that board meeting because of this. I know each August, I think it's in August, typically you guys go to the, some of you go to the summer municipal meeting, and sometimes a council meeting is either moved or whatever. If that's on a Thursday, that would be legitimate grounds for the mayor to suspend that kind of a meeting. So as I was thinking through the possible reasons for making an exception to a blanket rule, that one jumped out at me. That's not to say that there couldn't be other exceptions inserted, but we had to start somewhere with a draft for you to look at, and I would like to get the council's thoughts on at least advancing it with the boards and get input and all that stuff from the other folks.
Do we make comments now?
Sure. I would make two observations. One, we had talked about the possibility of telephonic attendance, and, you know, we do that occasionally with our council meetings or special meetings for interviewing or budget or finance, so I think that we ought to consider that. And are we now under the understanding that appointed board members are not employees of the city but actual board members? That we need to delineate that somehow?
Board members by state statute are in fact employees of the City of Buchanan. They are part-time employees, but they in fact are employees of the City of Buchanan. There's no denying that. The mayor of the city is an employee of the City of Buchanan, and all, the city recorder and the five elected, you guys are all employees of the City of Buchanan. So you also are elected officials, but for certain purposes relative to federal and state withholdings and possible application of workers' compensation and all those other things, you are deemed by the state legislature to be employees of the City of Buchanan.
I think that's something that the municipal league ought to take up at some point in time. The, you know, it makes you wonder if a board actually is an employee. I understand you're saying the state requirement now, but I think that's something that ought to be considered for the future with talking and discussions with the municipal league.
I think there should be at least one other exemption for that, and that would be, of course, a death in the family. There may be others that are, you know, make it impossible or should make it impossible for a board member to attend. I think it's reasonable that we expect each board member to be at the meeting in order to get their compensation. I think it's unreasonable not to give an exemption or two because there are some unforeseen things that would come up that need to be considered. And I would suggest that perhaps we leave the actual final say in these exemptions to the decision of the mayor as to whether or not those were viable or not.
Maybe we could consider something that the legislature does, and that is that the body has the authority to grant leave for the day to a member who is absent. And that is in the discretion of the body to grant that leave, and they can consider the circumstances surrounding the absence themselves and whether it's council, the mayor, or whomever being empowered to grant leave under reasonable circumstances, because I think it is really, I think it's probably impossible to conjure up every possible, you know, reason somebody might miss a meeting and then say, well, this one, that's a legitimate reason, and this one's not a legitimate reason, and where do we draw that line? And it's a very, you know, it's a very touchy thing, but I mean, I think it's certainly, it's one of these things that are excellent ideas in principle. It's how do we get down into the weeds and make it work?
I didn't realize that you did that, but that's an excellent idea.
Well, I like the idea of the body. That would have been my suggestion.
Well, you don't want to make the decision, that's all.
No, I'll make the decision, but I think it's up to the board, the particular board to make the decision.
Now, what happens if there's no forum present?
Right.
You don't have a meeting.
Oh, I mean, you, you...
Is that a canceled meeting?
Yeah.
Under this, or?
Well...
And then the body can't make it, then there's no forum for the body to make a decision on leave for the absentee members.
It'd have to come at a future time.
I think it's a good first attempt, David.
Yeah.
Gives us some things to think about.
One thing I would caution the council about, you can't have the criteria for the four utility boards being different. That would be arbitrary and capricious. I think the standards have to be set forth in a policy established by the council that the respective boards could also be made aware of, because you can't have the water board saying, well, Joe went to a conference. That's a good reason. And then somebody unconsolidated goes to a conference and they don't get their compensation. That would just be asking for problems. Whatever exceptions you create, it should be consistently a black ball.
It's almost easier to say, if you don't attend, you don't get paid.
That's my thinking, but...
How does the school board do?
I don't think if you're there, you don't get paid.
I think if you don't attend a meeting, you don't get paid, no matter what circumstances are you in there.
Well, I agree with Ron that there should be some exceptions. Death, definitely. I mean, that's alert control or definitely an emergency that you can call and say, hey, you know, definitely. I'm not being disrespectful to the mayor, but why should the mayor be exempt from not being at the meetings like the rest of us? We were elected the same as him. So, you know, what's the difference?
See, I think we're not talking about your, as a council member, missing a council meeting and not getting...
Right, I understand.
We're talking about the board.
Yes, I understand.
And that's an assignment that you assume. And I said before, it's not about me.
Right.
But the office of mayor, which will be somebody else's two years from now, I assure you. As a council member, you deal with council matters away from this meeting daily. As the mayor, you deal with these matters regardless of the board or council or whatever it is on a daily basis. So I don't think that you ought to be docked your compensation as council members because you don't come to a council meeting. But I think that board, you have very little play individually in the board work other than the meeting. Very little play.
Right, but what if I was...
Very little play. Whereas the mayor has a lot of play in all those things.
What if I was a habitual person that missed the council meetings constantly?
Well, we have a provision in charter and in state code to remove a council member for repeated lack of attendance. I mean, you have, the council has that power to do so. It's not the mayor that has the power to do so, but the council has the power to remove someone who fails to attend.
If there is an exception, I think it should come back to you, the mayor.
That I should decide?
Make that decision, yes.
I disagree. And then can I make a statement with that disagreement? David, is there any way you can come up with like a mini list of appropriate type of excuses that would be...
We have things built into our employee handbook that Mr. Doss and I collaborated on a couple of years ago, and it sets forth a bunch of things in there. And since we are talking, as I said a little bit ago, members of council are employees of the city, we could steal some language out of that and say, these are the things that would constitute exceptions.
And I think it would be a good idea to see what the policy is with the school.
Yeah, and I like, I'm sort of the one that brought this up, I think initially. And I think, you know, looking at the school board is an excellent idea. I think it's a good first draft, David, and gives us a lot of things to think about. But the, I mean, you know, we're, the board members meet with these utility boards anywhere for a half an hour to two hours a month. And I'm upset that people are paid when they don't go to the board meetings. I just don't think that's right. I also don't like the level of compensation, $200, but that's something that, you know, I think can be addressed in the future. I think your timeline, we have enough discussion here this evening that, you know, maybe we can say this doesn't have to be effective till October 1 or January 1. We need to give some more thought to it. Kenny's right when he says, when you start doing exceptions, my gosh, how do you value the exceptions? It's very tough to do that.
Why don't we, I mean, has there been any investigation on what other municipalities do in these instances?
I think Morgantown has a very good policy. Their council members are not paid for board duty. They are assigned board duty as part of their...
Membership.
Part of their, you know, compensation as a council member. And I don't think they pay unless they're required to pay, you know, the board members. But I don't think they pay like we do, like we're the best paid board members.
Well, I mean, my feeling is that from a, maybe Mike will correct me if I'm wrong here, but from a financial standpoint, we're talking about a very small amount of money, right?
When you stream it across four boards, yes. It's not much.
And they're carried by those boards' individual budgets. So what we're talking about here is the symbolism or the principle or the appearance.
Well, isn't that important?
Well, no, well, that's what I'm saying. I think it is important. But this isn't about money, I think is, I mean, needs to be said.
I don't necessarily agree with that, Tom. I think you're looking at somewhere between $17,000 and $18,000 a year. And of course, if you're just not going to pay them when they're not there, I have an issue with the amount of compensation. This is a different issue. So I concur with you when you're saying that, you know, people not probably missing that many boards, who knows? We don't have any idea as to what that is. But again, I think it's a really excellent point of discussion for us, and, you know, each of the boards needs to talk about it a little bit and get the feedback to the appropriate people at that time and talk about this some more.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to advance this draft to the boards and get comment from the boards and see if we have other suggestions, see where it goes from here.
If I understand it right, Mayor, the reason that you are exempted or the position of mayor is exempted...
Thank you.
Is because they are not appointed to any boards? They're a member of all the boards?
In Morgantown?
No, here. Here.
Their chair.
The members are chair of each board.
Yeah, right. Mayor, chair of each board. Mayor, chair of each board.
So in essence, are you appointed?
No, I was elected mayor.
You was elected mayor?
And our charter and those enabling ordinances that were cited in this one say that the mayor's the chairman of the board.
Okay. But your salary, what I'm getting at, is not...
Mayor salary...
Mayor's salary only is not a board salary?
No, it gets paid from five different sources.
From five different sources?
General fund pays some, each of the boards pays some.
Well, then I don't understand why you should be, or the mayor's position should be exempted if it's paid from those funds too.
Well, I say, I'm not defending myself, I'm defending the position.
I understand that, but I don't see that as being any different than a council member who's appointed to a board being required to be there if it's such a case that whomever is the mayor cannot be there too. And since they're paid by that board, I see no reason why the mayor, that salary should not be docked as well.
If I could speak to that, having been here forever and a day, knowing the day-to-day operations of the city, and knowing that the mayor is the one that is here and has to deal with the day-to-day issues, daily interaction with the supervisors, the trips to the sewer plant and the water plant and the waste collection garage, I mean, going all the way back, whether it was Bill Short, Jim Carpenter, Tony Gumm, Becky Poundstone, Nancy Show, Jim Nor, Kenny Davidson, I know what's involved with that. And I certainly can understand Mr. Davidson's position that it not be about him, but as the chief executive officer. But Cannon's governmental form right now, like it or not, is a strong mayoral form of government. He is the chief or she is the chief executive officer. And I think that's, I'm not speaking, the mayor can speak very well for himself, but I think we've had a lot of discussion about that.
I understand the responsibilities are enormous.
They are, they are. It's an $11 million a year operation.
And...
Ten percent.
That would take an ordinance. No ordinances.
But I think if we as board members were paid a salary that's anywhere close to what the mayor makes, and it's not a huge salary, but, you know, that we would feel a responsibility to throw ourselves into the job more so than we do now, in which case perhaps we would have a reason not to be, a reason to be exempted from that too, but...
Well, I'll take Ron from just looking down the list, and Michael will confirm this. It's not the council members who miss those board meetings.
I know that.
It's the board members at large that miss the board.
I know that, I know that.
But there's another, there's another issue that we have to deal with, I think, at some point in time, and that is if this council before this past election would have said that the new council members that were elected should get an extra $200 or $300 or $400 a month, they'll be sitting with council members that are doing the same thing, making more money. It's a system that is archaic, as far as I'm concerned.
But it's the system.
It's a system, but we need to change the system.
Well, we tried to do that when we tried to change the city charter, remember?
Yes, we did.
So, I mean, it's something that we need to talk about in the future, quite frankly.
Well, we beat this horse pretty bad.
I appreciate the start.
I think he's bleeding, so let's, well, let's, we'll take this up again and consider suggestions and changes.
Just a couple other real quick things, and I'll shut up. I've got, working on a couple of projects for Jay Holland and the Deer Creek Development, as well as trying to finalize the Lumos issue. And just a public service announcement, the next U-Care Upstate Community Alcohol Reduction Effort Pull Party for the high school kids is this Saturday evening, 8:00 to 11:00, out at our pullout at the high school. That's all I have, unless you have questions for me?
I have a question.
David, in last council meeting, when you talked about the annexation of the five acres for the salvage place out there, you made a comment that they were not able to expand unless they were within the city limits.
That's correct.
What is the reason for that? I should have asked you then, I didn't, and I started thinking about it, and, you know, what are the, what's the rationale that they can't do it?
There's actually a couple of statutes that restrict their activities. One has to do with it being within so many distance of a state highway, road right of way, and that's part of it. The other is salvage yard operations, as they are regulated by state code, is different than if it is regulated by municipal ordinance.
What are the differences?
Well, they could not, they could not have located their original 13-acre facility where it was had that property not been annexed into the city a decade ago.
Because it fell under state guidelines, and the state guidelines restricted that operation within a, within a distance of the center line of a four-lane highway.
Thousand feet.
Well, I don't know whether it's a thousand feet, but it would been, it would, where they were proposing to do business was within the restricted area unless it was in a municipality, and if it's in a municipality, then the municipal regulations trump the state regulations. I was down the other end of the street as a commissioner when this took place, and that was the reason for the annexation.
You might remember Brad and Tom Hosfeld.
Yes, I do.
Tom was killed in a plane crash just a couple of years ago. They came to the city after the county had the prosecutor weigh in and cite all that stuff, I guess, and made their application, made a nice pitch to the city, they're going to hire 40 employees and X millions of dollars of year revenue, and people staying overnight in hotels and eating in the restaurants, and the council decided then to approve the annexation.
They've been a good neighbor.
They have.
Now, they're subject to BNO tax, am I correct?
They're not.
They're not?
They're not covered under, we don't have a service BNO at this point.
Okay, I mean, that's my other issue that I have, quite frankly, is that...
Mr. Doss is looking at me funny, but they don't, pretty sure they don't file BNO, they don't sell anything. They just smash.
Oh, no, they don't.
They sell.
They store everything.
They smash.
They don't smash, they sell. I stand corrected. I don't get to see those tax records, he keeps pretty much lid on.
I don't either.
But there's another question that I think from my perspective is long-term that this council needs to start thinking about, as part of the, probably the planning, you know, the planning commission or, you know, even our long-term plan for the city, is that we need to take a look at what is appropriate for different enterprises to come in within the city limits. You know, is there a negative consequence with salvage yards or not? I don't know. But I think it's something we need to think about for the future. And you said they're bringing five more full-time employees into the, into the operation, is that correct?
It's one full-time employee per acre, is what they...
Mr. Doss, do they pay BNO tax?
We can't talk about that.
They follow BNO tax.
They follow BNO tax.
They're in compliance with...
They're in compliance.
They're in compliance with the law.
Now, let me ask you another question about that. Only the city attorney and the treasurer know about the BNO tax, is that correct?
The city treasurer, the mayor, and as necessary legal counsel for the city.
Okay, what's the reasoning behind that?
That's what the state said in order for us to be able to access state documents. That's what they said we would adopt. That's the state law.
What do you, what do you file Freedom of Information Act?
It's exempt from the Freedom of Information Act.
That's state tax department regulates.
So we're not supposed to even know if they file?
Mr. Doss could answer a question of whether they filed a return.
Okay.
But he could not tell you any particulars about a particular business's financial...
The only thing he can say to you is they are in compliance, or they are not in compliance. That's all you get.
That's all learning experience.
That's all you get.
You write that down, so you don't forget.
I won't forget.
It's sort of silly as elected officials that we enact a BNO tax and we can't even...
But it's, it's part of the state of West Virginia being one of four, that the power rests in the legislature rather than in home rule. And the legislature makes the rules, and we have to comply with it.
Well, understand that there is no state BNO, it hasn't been for 30-some years. That the way that, the only records of a tax nature that the state has are income tax records. Mr. Doss has the ability to double-check what someone is reporting income-wise with the return that is filed with the city. I don't think any member of this council would want to be put in that position where someone could say, "Oh, you're looking up the tax return information of your next-door neighbor, your ex-wife, or those kind of things." That's the reason that stuff is protected. You can't, you can't access income tax records.
And if he, if Michael or I divulges that information to you, we are subjected to a $10,000 personal fine. You're not getting it from me, folks, that's all there is to it. And you're not treating me right, you're not treating Michael right, if you're asking. Leave him, leave him alone, he's doing his job.
It's nice to...
He's doing his job, and he's doing it quite well if you looked at the report.
I think you looked at the stripes, though.
Yeah.
I might say that I never did understand why it's considered a salvage yard, because in essence, they bring a wrecked vehicle in, and the insurance company does, and it stays there until they sell it to another individual or something like that.
Well, they'll sell them out to scrappers.
Yeah, but they do no destruction or anything here. It's not a salvage operation.
It's not the same cars either. It's, the cars change every...
Yeah, they change, yeah. I see trucks all the time hauling cars in, hauling cars out.
Coming and going.
And you can go out and buy one yourself.
If you have a business license.
Yeah, if you have need of something that's worse than what you're driving.
Or better.
Anyway, they are an asset to Buchanan, and that's it.
Any other questions for David? Okay, we'll move along then. You have in your packet a memorandum regarding the Conference Center Managerial Committee. See who is there. Consent agenda is approval in minutes of regular meeting July 3, filling and wiring prevention, paying the bills, would entertain a commotion. A commotion.
A commotion.
To approve the consent agenda.
I second that commotion.
The commotion's been made, and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no, aye. Thank you for that commotion.
Look, a motion.
Issue regarding use of LPRs by Buchanan City Police, do you want?
I ask that be put on the agenda, and I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion, and we can discuss it afterwards. I'm going to move that we remove the automatic license plate reader from the city cruisers, place it in storage until such time as the legislature or the Attorney General gives us a written decision concerning the collection, storage, and dissemination of info gathered on all license plates. That is, all license plates that are not solo related. That is my motion.
Motion, aye.
Second.
And second. Discussion.
I don't think that's permitted under our agreement with the state police, for one thing. I certainly, I support the idea of getting a written opinion from the Attorney General on it. I think that's, I think, no problem with that whatsoever, because I think, I know what his response is going to be, and that is that they are not unconstitutional.
Well, I don't know how you can know what he's going to say, Tom.
Well, I, I mean, I think I know the Attorney General a little bit, and I know his philosophy, and I know what every, and I know what every...
Let's don't get into a pitch here now. Tom's has the floor.
Every court of record in every state in this entire country, when it has been faced with the issue of whether or not the use of these devices violates the Fourth Amendment, have unanimously, without exception, said they do not violate the Fourth Amendment. Now, what that means is it becomes a policy matter for us to decide, and we can say they're a good idea or they're a bad idea, but we should not say, I think it is incorrect to say that they are unconstitutional, well, it is incorrect to say that they are, they have been found unconstitutional.
Well, my motion today does not say unconstitutional.
I understand that, but what I would, but what I, when we are, when we are considering the motion, I would suggest that, you know, we, you know, we addressed this issue a month ago, maybe a month and a half ago, whenever the last vote on this same motion was, was offered. And at that time, we, or the meeting after, we passed a, prior council, I guess you would say, right, passed a resolution for the municipal board, or the municipal league to take this up and for the legislature to address this issue. You know, that's a month ago, the municipal league hasn't even met yet. I think that, that we should give, let's give this resolution time to see if it works. But in the meantime, I think it is, I think it's appropriate for us as a body to determine whether or not these are, this is an appropriate policy choice for the city of Buchanan. As of right now, you know, my feeling today is that it is the correct policy choice for the city of Buchanan. Abuse of the technology would certainly change my mind, and I think, and frankly, I, you know, I think I've been pretty consistent in that. I don't know if I have anything really original, you know, further to offer, except, you know, the only, the only thing, the only difference between when we passed the resolution and when there was a, and in this meeting, is that we have two new council members, which is good, which is a fine enough reason to revisit the issue.
Yes.
And I certainly don't object to those grounds. However, I would say again that, that we're talking about one mobile unit in our town, one, that the police department has said is a valuable tool for them. If we take, if this motion passed tonight, the folks down the street, two of whom are former law enforcement officers themselves, could effectively undo what we do by putting them on sheriff's department vehicles and driving them around the city of Buchanan, and there's not a thing we could do about it, or the state police could put one on a state police cruiser and drive it around the city of Buchanan, and there's nothing we can do about it. So let's give this some time and not, let's give this, let's give this time.
Just because...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Let me, Mary?
Sir? Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you for your explanation in detail, okay? I second that emotion. But I'd like to withdraw my second of the motion because I like what you have said, okay? Because it makes sense. Sorry, Ron, I wasn't privy to that information. I did not realize too that it was going to take that long for the municipal league to come back, because that, it was never said when they would meet. I don't know how long it takes for that kind of stuff.
Yeah, well, it's on August.
What's happening here? Let me explain what the municipal league, please. The way you get the municipal league to cause the legislature to act is you send a resolution to the legislative committee. They will meet this fall, they will come up with their legislative agenda. We're not going to see anything on this, a bill or anything, until spring or late winter, during the session.
February this year.
January?
Second Wednesday, January. 60 days begins the second Wednesday.
That's right, February and election.
January and the year following.
So, you know, you're not going to see anything like that. Ron? Well, I'm aware of what it takes for the municipal league to get something to the legislature. I'm also aware of that 80% of everything that's introduced into the legislature never makes it out of committee. We're not guaranteed this will ever come to a vote in the legislature.
That's true.
My, my concern still is the violation of the Fourth Amendment and what goes on, not from this department here, but what goes on when the information is, goes to the state police or to anybody else that's higher up the chain than the local people.
Okay, let's, let's see if we can get another second here.
I'll second it.
We got, we got, we got a second here now? Okay, go ahead, Ron.
Go ahead, Ron.
Well, you lost my train of thought there.
I'm sorry.
Can I say something in the meeting?
Sure, go ahead.
Well, and before we're done, I want to hear what Doug has to say.
The, you know, I, I have debated on this thing within, you know, myself as to what's the right thing to do. And I know when Matt brought this to us, he had great intentions. I understand that. I think it's a, a good tool in many ways, but I have some, I have some issues about that Matt was not able to answer some questions because he didn't know at the time. I don't necessarily like the, you know, how long do they store the information for, who has access to it and so forth. I think your motion, Ron, is much better than the last motion you made that you wanted to defeat it, basically. I'm of the opinion, I'm still on the fence some degree. I'd like to think about it some more. I don't want to make a decision this evening. I think, Tom, you brought up some things that are very observant and worthwhile. I'd like to table the motion for a while and, you know, give us an opportunity to think about it more and, you know, is there anything, Mayor, that you might be able to call up? The municipal league's a lobby for us, right? The cities? You know, I think Tom made one comment in a meeting a few months ago, or a month ago, is the jurisdiction. You know, I would think that the state would want to do something that helps out all the different counties and the cities to be consistent with this kind of technology. And maybe it's not right now. That's what I'm worried about.
Can I, I'd like to speak to that exact point. And it's just one thing I didn't get to in my prior, my prior comments. You know, for those who don't know, I, one of my jobs is as the attorney for the minority leader in the state senate. And so, I work down at the state senate during legislative sessions. And one of the bills that we dealt with this year, Senate Bill 317, is the bill that dealt with concealed carry, basically, in the state. And the, and the rallying cry for that bill is one state, one law, right? And I think that's the same principle that I think that I'm trying to shoot for here is that we're going to make this decision on this, that this decision is rightly made at a statewide level, that we don't have this patchwork crazy quilt, you know, they're not okay in the city of Buchanan, but they're okay in Upshur County, and they're not okay in Barber County, but they are in Philippi or Weston and so on and so forth. We need one, one decision on this. And that's, my resolution of last month was geared towards, and that is what, and that is, and that is something that I've taken up with members of legislature individually.
Tom?
That's what I was saying, Tom. You just did it more articulately now.
I can't be-
Rick's turn.
Okay, Rick's turn.
This will be the first time I've had the opportunity to discuss this or bring this up on this council. I've been thinking about this for quite a while, since this was first brought up with the police department and with this council. I disagree with, well, actually, yeah, I disagree with Tom because I would actually encourage the state and the sheriff's department to actually use this technology. First, because of the distance that we're talking about, the amount of cars that is used with this tool. I come from the city of San Antonio with over a million people. You've got over three million cars. That is a tool that they need to use to go from one side of a city to another side of the city, or alert, even in Morgantown or Pittsburgh, that it's needed for. Here, you can drive in through this town in three and a half minutes. And that's if you don't get hit by the lights. Maybe four and a half minutes.
Or another car.
Or another car. I have a problem with our technology going up and down our streets every day and continually taking and tracking those numbers and what they're doing with them. I would totally agree with the ALPR if it stayed within our municipality for thirty days or however long, but did not leave. I understand there's agreement with the Fusion Center. You know what? I may even agree just to give it to the Fusion Center. What I have a problem is where does it go from there? That's the key I have. And the reason why I'm seconding this is because I want to get it done. I want this council to phone on it. I want everybody to understand where everybody stands so we don't deal with this again. As far as the municipal league is concerned, who knows if they're going to be able to do anything about it? And like you say, there are other municipalities that have an issue with this. There are other municipalities that agree with it. I don't think the municipal league is going to be able to do anything about it. I agree with Ron when he says, "I don't think the legislature is even going to act on it." I think it's within our obligation for this city. Last but not least, I've gone through the minutes. I've seen for the last year and a half since this has come up. I do believe that as, I don't want to micromanage any departments, but I do believe this should have been brought up to council before it was initiated. That's what I have to say.
Before it was received and utilized?
Yes. It should be, we don't need to micromanage, no. But this is something that affects all of the citizens of Buchanan. I understand it's a tool and it's a great tool in, used the proper way. I just don't think it is required here in Buchanan.
And I like the fact that they could use it and use it as a good tool. But I don't like the fact that the data, there's, there's no control over who is going to get access to that, how long it will be maintained.
Doug? All right. Let me ask you a question. Let, let me ask you a question. To clarify, my own understanding and maybe help some of these folks understand. That ALPR takes a photograph. It's triggered by a metal license plate that has a sequence of numbers. A metal piece of something that doesn't have a sequence of numbers does not talk to it. So, it sees a license plate or something similar to a license plate that's metallic and it takes a picture. If you're, if the camera's really close, about all you're going to see is the rear bumper and the license plate. If it's at some distance, you might see a picture of the car. There may even be somebody standing there that's in the picture. The data that transfers to the Fusion Center is what? The license plate number, the date, time, and a GPS point of the cruiser.
And the photograph.
Well, yeah, it's the plate number and the photograph. That's what goes. Now, if I see that license plate and I want to know whose license plate that is, that doesn't transfer to the Fusion Center. That piece of information is somewhere else, but it doesn't go with this ALPR. This ALPR only sends that plate and that photograph. Date, time, and a GPS location. There's no name, there's no address, there's no social security number, there's no anything else associated with that. Now, I can get that, you know, and I know that Doug can pull a car off over here that's been speeding and call the NCIC and ask them to run the plate, and they'll send, they'll give him the information. He has to identify himself. He has to identify himself. I can't do it, but, but he has to identify himself and he has a way of doing that. So that the NCIC will give you the personal information on that license plate if you request it. And you're only supposed to do that in line with some kind of an investigation or a traffic stop or some kind of criminal activity.
Or suspected.
Yeah. And if you use it for any other purpose, you are liable, personally liable.
And our department is. And actually get the NCIC capability, yank from us.
So, this ALPR is just a license plate. I can stand out here on the corner and watch all these license plates go by. And I knew a guy, and you can believe this or not, I directed traffic out of the drive-in theater when I was a kid, about twelve, thirteen, fourteen years old. And an older gentleman in the community up there took four of us one evening. We were taking turns writing down license plates as fast as we could as they were going out at night. And then he read them all back to us because he could remember those plates. I mean, it was just a unique talent. And he did it more than one time. So if I had that kind of a mind, I could, you know, I could come up with a whole list of license plates, but it's meaningless. It's only a license plate.
Well, how come you haven't explained all this before like this?
We tried to. We tried to. Doug, Doug, now, give us, why do we need that ALPR? What, what advantage is it to the police department?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know the exact statistics. Jay Holmes told me at one time about the statistics of how many vehicles actually travel through Buchanan, okay? There's a lot. I want to say upwards of over fifteen thousand cars come through the city of Buchanan at any given time, okay? Last year alone, we had seven vehicles stolen, okay? They were returned, but they were returned damaged. If we had known, if we had that, that LPR, that capability, and we knew those vehicles were stolen, you know, the, the vehicles were driven around our community, okay? If we had known they were stolen, it was reported, and that LPR picked it up, we probably could have, you know, prevented the car from being returned damaged, okay? And, you know, that was a tool that, that, you know, enables us to recover stolen vehicles. If there's a, an Amber Alert, okay, it will help us. If it alerts us on a plate that was involved in a child abduction situation, you know, those capabilities are there. The LPR is there to help us, okay? Ron, I know you're against it, but what if, what if you ordered us to take it off the car today and your car gets stolen tomorrow? Would you regret us taking the LPR off the car?
You know, Doug, I think that sometimes the benefits of something that we're utilizing are outweighed by the consequences of what could happen if it's used. I'm not against the ALPR. It's a great police tool if all you're taking is BOLO plates. And you know what I mean. But I think the passive plates that are taken on this, stored for thirty, sixty, five years, ten years, whatever, I think that is where we're going to get in a situation. The FBI initially developed the ALPR. They developed it for tracking of criminals and investigative purposes. Once they had it developed, Homeland Security came in and took it from the FBI. They further developed it, and they admitted this, they further developed this for no sole purpose except for data collection on individuals. That's what their purpose was for. That's why we have the passive license plates being collected and stored and sent up. Has nothing to do with the current investigations or Amber Alerts or any, anything else.
But I agree with Tom. You know, I think instead of having patchwork legislation, okay, on one, the use of the LPR, I think the state legislature needs to come up with, with a plan that involves, you know, the storage of data for, you know, thirty, sixty, ninety days, year, whatever. That should be up to legislation. And I think it should be universal. You know, that's what Ron's saying to some degree is, I mean, that's the issue I have. I want the Amber Alert capability and to be on the lookout for a criminal, you know, sexual predator or whatever, but it's a darn storage of the information for, gosh, one to five years. What, why do we need that? What's the point of this?
It's only one. I mean, it's one year. Let's make sure that-
But we were told five years at one point.
Well, it differs, depends what state you're in as to what-
In West Virginia, they keep it for one year.
But why even one year?
Where is that extended?
That was the, the folks, the, the gentleman who came here from the state police.
But why?
From the Fusion Center.
From the Fusion Center?
No, no, Wivings.
Yeah.
How long is it?
West Virginia Information Exchange.
I flip-flop on this every time somebody talks to me.
How long?
Doug, what'd you say?
I agree with Tom. I believe it's one year. Well, that's about five years.
Pam?
Our local state police or sheriff's department, do they have this capability? Why do you think they don't use it?
Well, I'll, I'll be honest with you. They said if we have our review, they want it.
Why have they not gotten it before?
How much was it cost?
It was awful.
Twenty thousand dollars. How much was it cost?
Twenty grand. That's how many grand it cost.
Is there going to be a cost to us in the future for this?
We have one officer, liaison officer with the Fusion Center. And because of the fact that we have that liaison officer, it was given to our agency. I'm of the firm opinion, you know, I rely on what my parents used to say, you know, work smarter, not harder. When you get, are given a device that helps you in, you know, catching stolen vehicles, stolen license plates, Amber Alerts, use it.
Well, may I?
Somebody will call for a question.
No, I've got, I've got a question.
I called a question.
Call the question?
Question.
I like a roll call, please.
Tom calls a question and I'll ask the recorder to call the roll.
Is there any way of calling not for the question for a minute?
Let's table that thing for a while.
No.
We'll call the question. The question's been called. Call the roll.
So, the on, the motion is-
Now, this is a remove, a yes vote removes it from the-
Until such time that the legislature gives us instructions on, on it. I still have so much I wanted to say about them.
Mary Alba?
Yes, remove it.
No. Myself, yes. Pam Capari?
Yes, only I agree with Ron until it goes, we get from the legislature. I agree with the L, the blood it's for, but I don't agree with, you know, the information lasting that long.
Tom O'Neill?
No.
Dave Thomas?
Abstain. I take the chicken way out.
Mr. Pugh?
Yes.
Mayor Davidson?
What's the count?
We have three yeses, two no's, and then abstain.
And Dave, you understand abstention means you voted yes?
No.
In this instance?
Yes, it does.
Abstention?
Okay.
Means you voted yes.
Okay, I'll vote yes, we, we remove it.
Okay. Then the motion carries and there'll be, you instruct the officer, remove the stuff, contact Fusion Center. They'll probably want it back. I'm extremely disappointed. This is terrible.
This is worse than the method basis.
It's terrible.
I disagree.
Yeah, I know you do. Congratulations. Okay, let's move on. Second and final reading ordinance 382 annexation.
It's at the back of your packet, Mayor.
Yep.
Yep.
Third back.
This is second and final reading ordinance number 382 of the city of Buchanan. An ordinance providing for the annexation of three tracts of land, aggregating approximately five point four acres more or less, situated along or near the eastern side of the Brushy Fork Road, paying Upshur County Route Number Seven and Buchanan District of Upshur County, all under the corporate limits of the city of Buchanan, pursuant to the annexation by petition method as established by Chapter Eight, Article Six, Section Four of the West Virginia Code. You recall that two weeks ago, council approved this ordinance on first reading. If you approve it on second reading tonight, it will be effective on August seventeen, twenty fourteen.
Okay. Second and final reading on ordinance number 382, which is an annexation of property on Brushy Fork. Got entertaining motion to approve.
Seventeen.
Second.
And second. Further discussion? All in favor signify. So, the same, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. You will proceed with notifying the county commission, et cetera.
I will. I have to prepare a certificate for inter-execution after the thirty days and an order for the commission to sign, but it's, there's no hearing involved or anything. This is different from the boundary adjustment.
Simply on.
Yes.
Okay. Comments? Mary?
I'm disappointed on the APR. I'm sorry for our police department. I know originally voted to, worried about how long it was going to be stored. Tonight was an educational process. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Doug Loudon, for your input to educate me better on this On the flip side of that, something a little more pleasant, come out to Festival Fridays, have a great evening, fun right here at home. have a great evening, fun right here at home. You can walk and not worry about your car tags anymore. Don't forget to support our farmer's market at Jawbone Park. And, and I'm loving this cool weather, but what I understand is it's really dry, the snakes are bad, and so is poison ivy. So, if you're allergic to it, stay away from it. Thank you.
Keep it close, right? Okay. Pam?
Uh, yes, I wanted to bring up the ordinance on our dangerous dogs, uh, ordinance here in town.
All right.
I think we need to amp up what we do and do what we're saying, we're going to say in these ordinances. I became aware of a dog attack yesterday evening. The lady had, her dog, she had to take the dog, it was almost dead, to the hospital in Fairmont. It was attacked by a loose, free-running pit bull, and I was told there is four other ones at the house.
This Camden Avenue?
Cleveland.
Cleveland.
Cleveland Avenue. And lady already has almost a thousand dollars in, in bills for her dog. The dog has not been picked up. Evidently, our, our dog warden has been sick or whatever. And I've been reading in this ordinance that they have, if you have a dangerous dog, you have to have tags, and I think that's something we need to check into about if people are complying about this.
Do you have a name you want to give it to me after me?
Yes.
Okay.
The lady, I suggested her come see Mr. Levine tomorrow with her bills, whatever. But also, and before this happened, I actually was in Dollar General store three days ago, and there was a pit bull running freely in, out in the parking lot. People stayed in the store before the dog, while the dog, till it disappeared. So, I've been seeing several of them around town, I mean, on leashes, but, but this ordinance that said they have to have tags that say they are dangerous dogs.
Well, then, I think that the ordinance says that a pit bull is by breed a dangerous dog. And I've seen some pit bulls that lick you to death.
Well, this is Section Seven. It's pit bull, dogs presumed dangerous.
Yeah, right. I mean, it's in the ordinance. I understand, and that was taken from statute, I know. So, give me the name. I think I know who you're talking about, and, uh, we thought it had been resolved because they moved. They moved, and now I guess they're back.
Well, just like she told me, not very far from where this happened, there were little, little children playing in the yard, and it could very well have been a child.
Yeah.
There's a house on Cleveland Avenue that has five dogs, and I have a friend of mine that lives near there, and he's called City Hall numerous times.
That's the one.
And nothing's been done about it. And, you know, we have...
Well, there were, there were notices sent. If it's the same one, that's why I'm asking for the name. Apparently, we don't want to put the name out here, and I don't either, but, uh, there was something done. There were letters written, and the dogs were moved. They were moved to another location. They were out of there. Now, if they're back, they're back, but they were...
Well, they're...
They were given notice. This was within the last week or so.
This conversation I had was in the last four or five days, and I said, call the City Hall again and talk to them about it.
They didn't talk to me. Okay.
Well, I hadn't had time to read this, but evidently, I don't know how it's done, but shouldn't these dogs be immediately quarantined? They could have, be rabid or anything.
Well, I don't know the, well, to see how this plays with...
But I mean, I mean, this lady's dog is, was almost dead last night because of...
Okay.
Being mauled.
You give me the name after me, and we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at it. We'll see. I thought we had a result.
Okay. That's all I want to hear.
Okay. Anything else, Pam?
No.
Rick?
Yes, sir. I'd like to bring a couple things before council to put on your radar. First of all, we are now in the process again of looking at the codification of our ordinances. We have actually asked a few companies and got a few references back from that. It's not as difficult as it may seem, and it's not as expensive as it may seem. What I would like to stress is, though, how important it is for us in our record-keeping and for research in future, at future dates, not only for FOIA, but for any kind of an ordinance issue, including the dog issue, that we have this. And that brings us up to, up to par with a lot of other cities that are already engaged in such processes. So, I'm going to keep that on the radar for you. We'll have some propositions for you. We'll be waiting at the municipal league meeting also and exploring it more there with the companies that'll be there. Secondly, the community, the planning commission, not only will be discussing the special zoning, but we have to, we have to, by statute, by the end of this year, have ourselves a comprehensive plan in place. So, it's really important that this planning commission come together, not only for our special zoning, but to make sure that we're taking care of on a comprehensive plan. That not only requires that meeting, but there are a couple of other meetings that will be required, because I do believe that comprehensive plan, as it is written now, and that this council had looked at and somewhat approved, didn't approve officially.
Oh, they didn't, they rejected.
Right. It's going to have to be rewritten, then, if that's the case.
No, it doesn't have to be rewritten. The amendments will...
We're going to go with...
You bring the amendments in here, it'll, it'll go.
Anyway, either way, it's going to be a process, it's not going to be as fast, and we've got a couple of those to do it. And that's all I have.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Tom?
Uh, I'm concerned on the vote taken tonight, of course, and what it means for our, our, any possible obligation. You know, we could, you know, we're in violation of the agreement that was signed by our agent, the chief of police. I'm concerned about whether or not we might now have to bear the burden of, I expect that we're going to have to bear some cost for this removal. And, and I think that we have acted without due consideration of the costs of taking that action. And for that reason, I'd move to reconsider our action.
You making a motion?
I'm making a motion to reconsider the vote taken.
I second.
Can I ask a clarification first?
Motion's made in second, and we can discuss it. Go ahead.
Discussion.
David.
When, when you, as I said, I feel like a, sort of like a weasel up here, because I've been flip-flopping all over the place on this thing, depending on who, who talks, you know? And, and I like the motion Ron made, but I also want to have the police department be, have the real good technology. So, I felt some comfort in that the sheriff's department's going to take it.
Well, if Fusion Center lets them have it.
Well, I understand that, but that's what, that's what Doug was saying. I think this whole issue has been, you know, from the very beginning, we didn't address it the way maybe this council should have addressed it. I don't like when you abstain, you say it's a yes. When I abstain, I can't make up my darn mind, and I'd like to revisit it again. That's why I wanted to table the darn thing.
Well, you should have moved to table.
Well, I, I did. I did move to table, nobody said it.
No, you didn't. You said, "I think we should."
Well, but here's the thing, hold on, it's still my time. And it's my motion. And I'd like to say, because, and, and I'm not saying, what I'm saying is that I think we've acted without a full realization. I want to know, and I think council and the people of Buchanan deserve to know, what it's going to cost us to take this action before it is in place. That's why I make the motion to reconsider, and I urge that we reconsider, and we, maybe we can amend Ron's motion by putting it at a balance for some period of time to get an answer on what is this going to cost? What is, what, what does this mean for us? And then make a final decision.
Well, the...
Well, it costs twenty thousand dollars.
But I'm, I'm going to tell you what it's going to cost us. If we take this off until the legislature acts, what, what we did this evening was we permanently removed this unit from the city of Buchanan, because Fusion Center's going to want it back. Is that right, Doug? They're going to want it back. So, it's gone. We, we got rid of it this evening. And if that's what you want, then that's what you got. We're, we're rid of it. We don't have to worry about it anymore. It's over with. And that, so, you know, we're the most, we are reconsidering this now, and I, I need to run through my rolodex here and try to remember Robert's Rules of Order, what we're doing when we reconsider.
See, I...
We, we moved to reconsider, so I think we need to take a vote as to whether or not we will reconsider the issue.
That's right.
So, that's, that's the question before us now, is whether or not we will reconsider. So, a yes vote on this motion means, yes, we will take this up and go through it again, and no vote means it dies the way it was.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Are we still into comments?
We're still discussing it. We're, we're discussing whether we're not, whether or not we're going to reconsider it, and it sounds to me like we are reconsidering it, but go ahead.
Well, I, I would like to add one comment. It's been said that there's no way possible that this unit could be operated without taking the passive license plates. I think that's a misstatement. I think it could be programmed, reprogrammed, to capture only those plates that are in the BOLO request. You can't tell me that there's not a computer expert out there anywhere, especially working for the Fusion Center or for Homeland Security or anybody, that can't say, change this to this, and it will not take those plates that are not on the BOLO lookout. If that would happen, I would be 500% in favor of this piece of machinery. I just don't like the thought of having the information available for people that I don't trust, mainly the federal government up in Washington, and anybody having to do with the NSA, they've showed that, the IRS has been involved in this. It, it's hard to tell where our information might end up. I, if, if it could be changed to it only recognizes the license plate numbers that are put into it, what a great tool this would be for fighting crime.
And that's fine, but that's a state, I mean, you can't do that on a municipality-by-municipality basis.
Why, why, why can you not?
So, so plates captured from Buchanan...
No, 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 no. Plates captured anywhere on a BOLO number are the only ones it reads.
Time it. We are burning daylight unless we...
Well, we are burning daylight.
Unless we agree to reconsider. So, I'm going to ask, call the vote. A yes vote for this motion to reconsider means that we will pick this conversation up again, and no vote means we're going to forget about it and move on. All in favor of the motion to reconsider, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Roll vote, please. Oppose? The ayes have it.
Roll vote, please. Roll call vote.
Okay, roll call. Call of the...
Mary Alba.
Yes.
Myself, no. Pam Capari.
Yes.
Tom O'Neill.
Yes.
Dave Thomas.
I feel like abstaining, but I'll say yes.
Um, Ron Pugh, no. You have, oh, Mayor Davidson?
Well, you're gutting for it too, but I say yes, reconsider.
By the way, I think Robert's Rules of Orders does allow an abstention that does not indicate a vote either way.
Well, I think it's...
Now, that's a recusal.
Well, whatever.
I recuse myself. You've got to have a reason for it.
I can't believe the guys are doing this. Five, three... Our constitutional rights are being stepped on left and right, and you're still here, not even considering what? We had not one person in all of our public hearings that was in favor of this. Not one person. We had twelve people one night, very well-spoken people, very nice, didn't make any trouble, that were against it. You're not considering what the public wants on this, and what we did was not good for our public, not good for the public of West Virginia or the United States.
Well, I don't know, Ron, your, I mean, your motion can still pass.
Yeah, we're just reconsidering.
We're just reconsidering it. But I moved, but I moved to table...
We're watching all over the place.
I moved to table the motion.
I'll second that.
To table Ron's motion.
I want to, I want to talk about this more than just this evening. I want to do some more research on my own. I'm, I'm just really going back and forth everywhere. I don't usually do that on an issue.
Well, the one, the one thing, and I got to say that, so if the city loses it, the county, or if the state gets it, if I drive up to IGA in Rock Cave, they can still get my license plate.
Well, good.
Listen, all I'm saying here is that if, we're going to, listen, if Pam, if the, if the, if the three members who voted to get rid of them want to come back and vote again at the next meeting to get rid of them, more power to you. But I think in the meantime, we need to know what it is going to cost us to remove it in dollars.
Are you saying, Mr. O'Neill, that if it doesn't cost us anything, there's a possibility that you will vote the other way?
No. But I think, but I still think that, that we need full, that we need to act...
I don't recollect in the agreement that I read anything being said about that.
Well, let's, we'll, we'll do some research.
Well, I'll clarify one thing, too.
Well, let's, let's, let's get the meeting in order here, please. Let's, let's, let's make sure that we are doing what's right. We voted to reconsider the matter. Now, we had a, a motion...
To table.
From Ron, to, to remove this thing until such time has, and so now we are reconsidering that motion.
Okay, so we need to vote on that. Because we need to vote on that motion.
Or, we can table.
I, I move to table.
Hold on, you were, I'm sorry, Mayor, just a point of, you did a 52 vote to reconsider period. Now, you're in a motion by Mr. O'Neill to table.
Well, see, we're reconsidering Ron's motion now.
So, we're back to that point.
Let's all understand where we are. We are back to Ron's motion, and we can vote again on his motion, or we can consider this other motion for...
We can also not table it, just vote against it, but tabling is effectively the same thing, because it could keep coming up, meeting after meeting, and...
Well, I guarantee you it will.
That's fine, I, but I'd like to, I'd like to have another couple of weeks to think, to give some more research on myself, find out what the cost is.
I have a, a motion from, from Tom to table.
That was my motion.
Okay, your motion, and then Tom can second it, but what, how long are you going to table? Because unless you put a date on it, it's indefinite.
No, no, no later than the second council meeting in August.
Put a date on it.
Well, whatever that meeting is.
The 21st. Until the 21st?
Yep.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
To table until August the 21st?
Yep.
And that meeting, it comes up again, and we're going to vote on it?
Yes.
And we're going to put it to bed?
Yes.
At that meeting, we're going to put it to bed.
And I, and I would hope that we could get some answers on, in the meantime.
May I ask another question? I'll keep it simple. Is there possible that we can get a computer expert in to talk to us, to tell us whether or not the computer can be programmed to recognize only BOLO plates?
We have a motion to table until the 21st. Let's, but all in favor, say aye.
Those experts are out there, Ron.
Opposed, no? All right. We are tabling until the 21st of August, and...
What was the vote?
You were talking during the...
Was a voice vote. I heard no objection, therefore the motion carries, and we're moving on. And, Ron, you're up next.
Well, I'm not going to talk about that, so...
Okay, go ahead.
There's a house at 24 Cleveland Avenue that's been closed. It's a meth house. I have complaints from neighbors that they're seeing people going in and out of that house, which is... I took a picture, and it's all grown up. Looks terrible. I understand that it's under the offices of the beds now or something. Is that right, Doug? Anyway, we have no... Richard told me that we have no jurisdiction over that house right now. But there are people, that I've been told, going in and out of it and removing things and just for whatever, I don't know, but...
Well, we've heard that, too. And the police have left instructions with neighbors who are complaining. Call will come over. If we catch them in there, then we can do something about it. If you know who they are, if you'll sign a complaint. I don't want to sign a complaint. And it's one of the issues that we run into. It's very similar to... it's not the same, but it's very similar to somebody's got a barking dog. Do you know who's the... who owns the dog? Yes. Will you sign a complaint? Oh, no, it's my neighbor.
I know. People are afraid to step up.
And so, we do what we can. And Doug and I have had this discussion about 24 Cleveland, and we'll do what we can there. It has been placarded, and there's not supposed to be anybody there. It was meth being put down.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Don't forget this Friday and Saturday up at Rock Cave Fire Department, the barbecue in Bluegrass. Friday night, 7:00, Johnny Cochran and the Trail Blazers. And then, starting at noon on Saturday, there are five different entertainer groups. It's going to be a wonderful weekend to support the Rock Cave Fire Department. The firemen give so much and receive so little in return, and I'd like to see them supported really well. I wish everybody a few happy days of good weather, and God bless.
Thank you. Dave?
I'm not going to make a motion or anything, but Kenny, I think that... Oh, gosh, everybody's laughing.
Go ahead, buddy.
I think you, as a mayor, could give serious consideration to putting together an ad hoc committee comprising of a couple of council members and Michael Doss. I think we need to revisit the BNO tax and the fire and police. And I think it's an unlevel playing field. I've felt that for years. And I think it's time that this council, the city, addresses that. And I will be... you know, if you do that next council meeting, I'd appreciate that. If not, then I'll talk about it more explicitly the way I think we are not having a level playing field for either one of those ordinances, right, Mayor?
Dave, I'll tell you, we've had... you and I have had this conversation, none others, we've had this conversation about a comprehensive BNO and some of these other issues. And, you know, the level playing field in terms of the BNO tax, I understand the... We have some inequities in the police and fire service fees, which we've talked about. And between you and I, by next council meeting, we will prepare a report. And we'll get Michael to help us, and we'll prepare a report to bring to council so that we can let you know what we're talking about in terms of these fees and taxes that are being charged and why we think they're inequitable and get council's input on how we should proceed.
And we need to have a very open discussion.
Very open discussion. And we'll have it right here.
I think one of the issues...
And we don't want to know how much they pay.
I think what... well, I think one of the issues we have is that people don't realize some of the issues that, you know, for my... I have very strong opinions about this. I will not deny it, and I have some ideas that I think ought to be considered. But that's just my opinion.
Well, we'll put something together, and we'll educate council next meeting.
Thank you.
And my last comment would be, I really do feel like a... I don't know, sitting on the fence on this.
Move on.
Yeah, I'll... But, you know, it's... I appreciate Ron's comments. I appreciate Tom's comments. Rick, I appreciate your comments. And I've not felt comfortable about this whole thing ever since it was... we agreed on it. And I vote yes for it because I'm looking at the Amber and the BOLO and giving technology to Doug Loudon.
Your yes vote, you voted to kill it.
I'm going to table... yeah, I know.
Yeah, I'm offended because you recognize me and Pam.
I'm going to go home and spank myself afterward. The... it's a tough issue.
Yeah, it is.
It is. And that's why I'm glad we tabled it, too. And I guess I'll have to make my decision by August 21st, and I will.